Hello and welcome to the Project Elected podcast. Project Elect is a nonpartisan nonprofit whose goal is pretty simple. We want to get more Latter Day Saint women involved in public service. On this podcast, we interview amazing Latter Day Saint women who are involved in public service. My name's Audrey Perry Martin. I'm the founder of Project Elect and the host of this podcast. I am so excited today to interview Shontay Ruiz Zandoll because she is an Orem resident, which is my hometown. I talk about Orem a lot on this podcast. And she ran for Orem City Council last year. And she also is married to one of my favorite law students in my election law class at BYU Law School. So we are going to have a great fun conversation. We've got a lot to talk about. Shontay, thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you, Audrey, for having me. I'm so excited. I love Project Elect and just getting LDS women to be politically active because they're so wonderful, in my opinion.
Yeah, I 100% agree with you, obviously. I think it's so important, too. Well, first to start out, would you just kind of introduce yourself? Maybe tell us a little bit about your background and who you are and what you've been doing these past, I don't know, 10, 20 years?
Well, I'm originally from Tucson, Arizona. I'm the youngest of nine in a blended family. So my mom married my stepdad when I was super young. So like I was three and that's still, that's been my family. And so we're also a blended part member family. My father, he's Baptist and his children are Catholic. We were LDS. And so it was fun going to mass and, you know, just seeing the different faiths. And so I love my family so much. I was the first in my family to get a four-year degree. And the first in my family to get, you know, a secondary degree, a higher, like pass college. So I'm the first lawyer in the family. So it's been a lot of firsts, a lot of firsts for me in my life. When I graduated from college, I became a social worker. So I worked with, at first, I worked with children in the foster care system, trying to teach them life skills. That was my job was, you know, to teach, because they were preparing them to age out of the system. That was really hard work and I knew I needed more education. I did not want to be a social worker for the rest of my life. It was just such hard work and not paid very well work. So I knew I was going to go on to law school, but before I did to law school, I served a mission in Spokane, Washington, Spanish speaking. That's actually how I learned Spanish. People always, when my last name Ruiz, you're like, oh, you speak Spanish? Like, no, I was born in the States. I'm American as everyone else, so I don't speak any other language.
Well, now you do.
Yeah, now I do. That's been a great skill to have.
Yeah.
And then, so I went to law school about four months after I got home from my mission. I started law school and I just, I loved it so much. I loved it so much. And I focused a lot on children, child advocacy, children law in law school. I worked at, in Tucson, at the Juvenile Public Defenders. I went to Washington DC and worked at the Center for Children's Law and Policy that worked on racial disparities in the juvenile justice system. And a big project I worked on was helping, they're still trying to end solitary confinement for children. And then after graduating, I got to work for the FBI for, just for a year to see that. I was thinking agent route, but ultimately it wasn't for me. And then my husband started a law school. So then I had to figure out a job here in Utah. And I came upon becoming a guardian at Lighton where I represented abused and neglected children in the court system and advocated for their rights and their needs and their best interests in court. So I loved that job. I only left because I had my second child and I decided it was a good time that my husband, he could support us now that he was graduated and he had a job with benefits. So I said, okay, now's the time that I get to kind of, again, a first in my family, be a stay-at-home mom. It's something my mother never had an opportunity to do or my grandmother, because they had to work multiple jobs to support their families. And so I feel very privileged. I get to have the education my mom always wanted. I get to have the life, the home life my mom always wanted. And so I just, I feel really blessed.
That's such an amazing story and so many cool jobs that you've had that also seem pretty intense and hard and emotionally difficult jobs that you've had, but very important. I mean, representing kids and advocating for children who've been abused and neglected, that had to be an emotionally draining, but hopefully rewarding thing to do.
Yeah, I loved, I loved all of my clients. They were just, they're so special and it felt like a calling. You know, this was part of, you know, God's purpose for me is to help those children. And hopefully, you know, my plan is to go back at some point. But it was good to take a break because, you know, when you, when you have young kids and you're seeing abuses of young kids, it affects you.
Yeah, I can only, I can only imagine. That must be really difficult. I've talked to several people recently who work for nonprofits doing that kind of work. And they, they say sometimes you just need a mental break for a little bit. You just have to step away for a year or two and then you can go back because it's so, it's so draining emotionally to kind of see all of those things. So that definitely makes sense. Well, I thank you for helping those kids. I always, I always, my heart always goes out to those who are working with the, with the kids who really need help and really needs an advocate. So that's, that's incredible that you're, you're the type of person who is willing to do that and willing to make the sacrifices that you have to, to help those kids.
And I loved it so much because also being LDS helped me in my perspective with the kids. Because no matter what happens in their lives, and some of them are going to get led down bad paths because they had a bad beginning, the Savior, He loves them. The Savior will make up any difference. Any unfairness or unjustness will be made right in the eternities. So even if like I fail or the system fails them or their parents fail them, and, you know, I'm going to, we're going to work so hard to give them the best in this life. Ultimately, the Savior will protect and care for them.
That's, that's such a great perspective to have. And it, it's amazing that your faith was able to kind of support you and give you that perspective on those kids and know that, you know, they're, they'll be taken care of in the end somehow. That's, that's amazing. Well, I also kind of want to talk, because this is the Project Elect podcast, about your run for office last year for Orem City Council. Tell me a little bit about how that was and what you, how it was running for office, especially with little kids, like your kids are little. I think you had a baby, baby at the time, right?
My baby was six months old and my oldest was two years old.
My gosh.
At the time we started the run. And it was just, it was kind of a whirlwind. Everything in my life, I always just kind of have to like do it and not think about like realistically, oh, that's not going to work out. Like when I started law school, four months after my mission, that meant I took the, I studied the LSAT. I did my applications, all in four months, which isn't normal. Usually, I should have probably been rejected, but I got in.
You did it all in that four-month period?
Yeah.
And still got in like four, that's amazing.
With a scholarship.
That's amazing. You must be really smart because that would be hard.
But I don't know if I'm really smart or just naive. And I think that's certainly very well.
Probably both, maybe both.
Because, you know, when I told my husband, hey, I think I want to, the city council, the city election's coming. I got an email, city election's coming up for city council. It's in a few days. It's the last day to register. And he's just like, maybe talk to a previous professor who has, you know, has experience in that and just see what they say. And I talked to him and he suggested, maybe you could wait or you could do it now. And I was just like, if I felt very strongly that I should run, like I felt like the Lord calling me, like, you know, this, because there's so much that had happened in my life before that, like, you know, I never, I never wanted to go into politics. Like when I was in law school and they were talking about all the different things you could do. They talked about politics, like, nah, I'm never going to do politics. But I think the Lord just kind of gets me that way. Like when I said it, I said, I'll never, I'll do anything in this world, but I'll never be a lawyer. If I say never, God's going to get me on it.
It's going to happen.
It's going to happen. And so I submitted all the paperwork quickly. And then it just started and my husband helped me so much in it. And I did, I had no idea what I was doing. And so if I had understood what it really took to run a campaign, I probably wouldn't have done it. And so for me, that's, that's the way I just have to do, that's the way I have to be. Now, other women, they're much better if they know everything they're getting into, what the expectations are. And so whatever that, whoever you are, whatever your needs are, make sure when you're deciding to run, I think, not that you ask this, but my advice would be to women, just make sure who you are and what you need.
Yeah.
If you need to just take a plunge, just take the plunge. And I ultimately didn't win, probably partly because I didn't know exactly what it took to run an election. But I also went a lot farther than I anticipated because I do think I'm a voice that needs, needed representation. A young mother, a young woman of color. These things are not common in the political realm.
Yeah. And I want to talk about that a little bit more because I, we talk to women who win their races and lose their races. And a lot of times losing your race, you can learn almost more than winning a race about running and your community and all of that. So was that true for you? What do you think?
Oh, definitely. I feel like I learned so much by running. And I feel like I learned about how to run a campaign better. And I feel like I learned more about myself and about my community by, by running and really being entrenched in talking to people and what their concerns are and what their needs are. Because we get into our own little worlds, like, you know, we have our, our close knit family or our community, but we don't necessarily talk to people outside of that very often. And so when you're running, you have to, you have to talk to everybody. And so listening to everyone's different needs and different perspectives really taught me more about Orem and made me love Orem even more than I had had previously.
That's, that's fantastic. And how, I mean, losing can't be fun, but it sounds like you took it pretty well. How were you able to kind of deal with the loss and recognize the lessons without getting kind of sad or overwhelmed?
I mean, it was really hard because there's nothing, it sounds really cocky, but there's nothing I haven't applied for or sought that I didn't get. And so it was kind of like my first real failure.
Yeah.
In life and it felt great. It felt great because even though I lost, like I had so much support from people I'd never met. I didn't know. Because, and it felt great because I had learned so much and I had advocated for, for people and for a different perspective. And so it felt great to have gone as far as I had. And ultimately, losing, I, I became friends with people I didn't ever think I would be friends with. And so it was just, and it was very motivating of like, okay, so I've learned what to do next time.
So is there going to be a next time?
There, there, there probably will be a next time.
That's good, that's good. There should be a next time. Well, I, oh, I just completely forgot what I was going to ask you. But I wanted to go back to running as a mom with little kids. And, and why, you know, a lot of people don't feel like they should run until later or they want to wait till another season in their life, which is totally fine. Because, I mean, you have to know what, what you're up for and what you can do. But at the same time, there is so little representation, like you said, of young mothers in elected positions, just generally across the board, everywhere. LDS, not LDS, high level, low level. There's not a lot of young mothers in the trenches in, in baby, toddler, elementary kid ages that, that actually are holding public office. And so tell me a little bit about why you were willing to do it, even though you had little kids and why you think it's important?
I think the biggest reason I wanted to do it is because I just, I, I saw the city going in directions that weren't going to be good for my kids or my children's children. There's a, there's a Seneca Faith healer who, who talked about needing to make decisions with seven generations and the future in mind. And so, and that's really what I wanted to try and bring to the, the city council I was running for, is that idea of making these decisions, not just with ourselves or with our children in mind, but our children's, children's, children's. Because I think Orem is a wonderful, like, the city is a wonderful place to be. And I never, I always thought I would always just love my own hometown. But really, it's, this has become my home and I cherish it so much. And where, it's where my husband grew up and I want it to be a place that's similar for what my husband had for my children. And if they, hopefully they choose to stay by me, that they can have for their kids. That's really why I wanted to run was for my kids and their, their future generations after them. And running as a mom was just incredible because I just put them in the stroller and had at it. You know, going, knocking the park was a great place to meet other moms and meet other people, grandparents, stay-at-home fathers, stay-at-home moms, nannies. I mean, there is, there's so many people at the parks. And also they're usually very much wanting a good community, the people that go to visit the public parks. They're invested in having a community that is safe and is inclusive, inclusive of them. And so being a young mom, it was, it was really hard sometimes. You know, sometimes I wasn't there for bedtimes or, you know, my two-year-old was, what are we doing today? I don't want to campaign.
I bet, I bet, I don't know if it's a girl or a boy, but they were cute when they were campaigning though.
I think she got me quite a few votes, I'm not going to lie.
I bet she did, I bet she did.
I'm a cute protector. But also like, you know, I did a, an event where I was talking with all the, all the candidates. And in the middle of it, you know, she was like, hi mommy, very excited to see me up there. And she told my husband, I'm going to do that when I get big.
Oh, my goodness.
And so I think that was a good thing for my kids to see and for anyone's children to see is to see their mother being active in the community, being, putting herself in, in that type of position. Because that shows strength, that shows compassion, that shows everything that we want our children to become. And, you know, children learn much more from seeing than from saying.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So you talked a little bit about making the decision to run and how you felt really kind of inspired to do it, even though you hadn't been planning on it. How, how was that? Had you been praying about it or did it just kind of come to you that when you, when you saw that it was time, it was, you felt it was time?
It really was just, I hadn't thought about it at all. And then I got that email from just, you know, because, I mean, you know, I signed up for the city emails. And so when I saw that email, it just, something felt right. And then after that, I prayed about it and I talked about it with my husband. And it was, that was really key, having such a supportive husband.
Yeah.
And that, or, you know, just the support I have from my family. So if I hadn't had that, I wouldn't probably have done it. But he was very much, okay, we'll do this. And he was my partner.
Yeah.
And all of it.
So what, what experiences in your life do you think have kind of prepared you to run for office? And hopefully hold office one day?
I think a lot of my experiences in law school, I once, I was at a, an event and one of the, he's now retired, but Justice Hamonis of the Utah Supreme Court. He came and he spoke about needing a diversity on the court. And not just, and not just ethnic diversity, but he talked about diversity of all types. And he, he put it also towards politics. That needs a diversity as well, of age, of sex, of, of life experience. And he said, the reason, part of the reason we don't have that diversity is because people don't run. If, if you have, if you have, like, I think in the election, there was, there was three women. And if I do my math right, because I'm a lawyer, so I can't do math, seven, I think there was like,
Feeling?
I think there was like eight or nine men running.
Really?
I, I, yeah, I, I think there was 12 of us at the beginning of the primary. I might be wrong, but I feel like 11 or 12. And so just statistically, there's more when than women. And so when you have more men that are running versus women, more likely there will be men elected. And there's nothing wrong with men. I'm not trying to bash on men. But as women, it's if we don't put ourselves out there, we won't get elected. And if we don't put enough of ourselves out there, there's less, less chance.
Yeah.
Of women being elected. And the same thing is true of young women. The same thing is true of, of ethnic minorities. If we're not running, we're not getting elected.
Yeah, yeah. So I know that you are a big proponent, obviously, of women running for office. And what, what hesitations have you seen women express when they're considering running for, for public office? Especially as a Latter Day Saint woman? And how would you help them address those hesitations?
So many Latter Day Saint women have told me, I'm not smart enough. Girl, no, you are. I feel like they think I'm an attorney, so that makes me smarter than them, which is so not true. I have so many amazing female friends who I think would be wonderful in an elected office, city council, school board. They have so much, so much to offer. Because intelligence isn't measured by our education, our formal school education. Intelligence comes from our thoughtfulness. Intelligence comes from seeking information. Because so many of the women I know, they love to read, they love to learn. Maybe not in the traditional sense of going to school, but they, I'm so impressed by how much they read. I feel stupid, like, wow, you guys read so much and I don't. I love Netflix, but.
Netflix is great.
But I feel that so many of the LDS women I've talked to about, you know, my run and then, you know, their, their potential run, like, I'm not smart enough. Of course you are smart enough. You, you're a daughter of your heavenly Father. He has created you as you are and you are of value, you are worth, and you have something to bring to your community. He did not put you where you are just to, just to be. You can make a difference. You can make, you can bring so much to other people's lives. The next big thing is the children thing. It's like, um, women, maybe when my kids are grown up or out of high school. And, and a woman's choice should always be a woman's choice. If that's, if that's ultimately what you need in your life, I don't ever want to tell a woman what she should be doing. But also, if all of us think that way, then the people making decisions are people making decisions for us instead of us helping decisions be made for our families. And, I mean, I hold no animosity to people, to older, older people whatsoever. I think they, they also bring a value and life experience. But also they're more removed from what it's like to, to raise children. And they've never raised children in the environment we're raising children. So we, we as young mothers bring a very different perspective. And having us in office, having us as part of the leadership, making decisions in cities, in, in states, in, in national level politics can make a real big difference.
Absolutely. And you see that the few women who have younger kids that are in office, they really have a different perspective and a different voice. That's so important. Did, did your campaign get negative at all? I mean, I think all campaigns these days get, get the trolling and some of the negativity. So how did you deal with that? I mean, politics is so nasty right now. And a lot of women are concerned about that aspect of it when they're thinking about diving in. How, how was that for you?
I, I think I was collateral damage. And the negativity of it, it was just, it was, it was crazy to see the negativity. And I, I don't know how to even put it. It's the, the focus on trying to vilify someone.
Yeah.
Was, was very much alive in the campaign I was a part of. And while I don't feel like I was necessarily like directly, well, I was partially directly targeted. But it was, it was this, it was this idea to vilify one of the candidates. And because we all placed our signs in a similar location, we had been clumped in that. And it was just, it was really sad to see.
Yeah.
Because I, I didn't anticipate that. I thought, okay, I'm running in this, this wonderful city's election. I know these people, like I know so many citizens, they're all kind, they're all, this will not be a negative race. Most of the candidates were LDS. It's like, there's no way this can get negative. And I was sorely wrong. And I think, I, I don't know 100% why it went that way. But I think part of it is, as a candidate, you have the ability to, you know, hire people, like campaign managers, you have the ability to get help from outsiders. And if you choose, if you choose to follow every single advice, sometimes it's going to be about winning and not your character.
Yeah.
Because other people, you know, they're going to be focused on getting you elected, getting you to win and not who you are.
Yeah.
And so I think, I think some of the candidates that went negative, part of it was not who they were, but who they listened to and how to win.
Yes, yes. Campaign, campaign consultants are the worst. Just kidding, I work with a million campaign consultants. But you're right, they, their goal is not to have you be a candidate of integrity. It's not to have you be, you know, standing for what's right. It is to get you elected. And if that is your only priority, which is, you know, how, it's their job and you listen to everything they do, you might do stuff that, that maybe you, you shouldn't. And maybe you would think twice, you should think twice about. So that's actually really good advice. I've seen that a lot in politics, that people listen too much to their, to their consultants and their campaign managers who aren't bad people. They just have a different goal, sometimes than the candidate themselves.
Yeah. So, I go, I think for any woman that's going to, you know, anticipate there's, there's going to be something negative said about you or you're going to get caught in the crossfires. But if you know who you are, if you know that you, those, those misrepresentations aren't true and just, just roll with it. And because, you know, people brought it up to me as like, well, well, they, they said that you're this and that you're, you're bought for. I was like, I am not bought for. I had, I had, I had the lowest count in money dollars and I got, I got, I got the best bang for the buck. I had like the least amount of money, but with the far, like the farthest in the election. I spent well and I was also the worst at asking, asking for money. Even when I asked for money, I was like, I'm, you know, looking for donations, but you know, don't feel like you have to. So as you're deciding to run, practice asking for money. And just know that who you are and that you are a person of integrity and morals. And if they're, if they're going to go low, you know, if they're going to try to knock that and say that you aren't, let them. And then when you talk to people, they will see who you are. And so that, that's going to be very important to, to give out there as much as possible, to knock those doors, to talk to people. Because when I did talk to people, they thought, oh, so what they're saying isn't actually true. No, it's not. It's a misrepresentation. It's.
In politics? No, never. That's, that's really good advice. And I think as LDS women, we, we have a really, you know, something strong to fall back on. Because we know, you know, we should know internally who we are and what's important and, and not let the negativity and the misrepresentations, because there's always such ridiculous misrepresentations in politics. It's everything's twisted, right? Um, and I also like your advice to practice asking for money, because I also am terrible at asking for money. And it's hard. It's, it's, it's a learned skill, but it is something that you can learn and, and setting up a few safe situations where you can talk to people and kind of dialogue out the ask, um, on the phone or on, yeah, you know, in person and just making yourself do it, it really helps.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I mean, yeah, money is, my husband, I decided how much we would put in ourselves. And then I got, I got lucky with a, one time I was just talking to Manny, he's like, what's your political affiliation? And city council's a nonpartisan. And, and so like, or he didn't even say political affiliation, he's like political philosophy. And I said something about being reasonable. And I just chatted with him for a couple of minutes about what reasonableness is. And it's not one party or the other. It's not one extreme view or the other. It's usually somewhere in the middle. It's about figuring out the best for as many people as possible and fiscal responsibility. I, you know, I'm, I'm a penny pincher, I know it.
Well, hey, you got a lot out of your, your bang for your buck in your campaign, so that's good.
And so as I was talking to him, he just like pulled out $400 and I think that was like a fourth of our budget.
My gosh, oh my gosh. You did, if that's a fourth of your budget, you did well to get through the primary.
Maybe it was like six, but it was, it was pretty close. Like, I'm terrible with math, but it was, it was pretty close to that.
That's, that's incredible. That's really incredible. Um, and that's so cool that you have, I mean, he obviously didn't really know you, but was willing to, after talking to you, give you, give you money. And people are, and I think that's, uh, I think it's hard in LDS communities especially, cause a lot of LDS people aren't used to giving money. And so you kind of have to introduce them to the concept a little bit about why it's important. Um, but it's, I think it's, you know, it's great when you can explain to them why this is important and, and why, why you would make a good candidate. So good for you to, for doing that, even though it's not your, your favorite. Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, well, what, what advice would you give to somebody who's, you know, considering running for office, but not sure they wanna dip their toes in?
I think the first advice I would say is pray about it. Um, and then if you feel that the Lord is thinking you, you should, if you feel that any sort of positivity towards it, then progress towards that. Um, I, I once met a woman, she was trying to decide whether or not to go to law school. And she's like, I got a yes that I should go to law school, but I didn't get a re, reaffirmation of it. I was like, that's because the Lord already told you. He's not gonna tell you twice all the time. He's too busy for that. You, if you got, you gotta take the yes and go.
Yeah.
And so if you pray about and you feel that the heavenly father wants you to run or become politically active, do it. And if you, and you can ask different questions, like, can I, should I run now? Should I run in a year or two? Like, you know, what should I run for? Like, the, that's, that's well informed, you know, of course, ask the specific questions, but then start making progress towards it. Um, our Father in Heaven, he needs us to, to make this world a good place for our children, especially as women. I, I've been thinking about this a lot in the family proclamation to the world, you know, we are, we're primary nurturers, but also in that proclamation, we are responsible for the physical and spiritual needs of our children. And the physical needs are also the politi, like, the, the government in which our children are being raised. That is part of their physical needs. And as a mother, if you're running for office, if you're trying to get elected, you're not taking away from your children's nurturing of them. You're not taking away from being a good parent. I think you are being a great parent. Because you're thinking of their needs and also of other children's needs. So, uh, I, I, I think just, just start that, start that preparation with our Father in Heaven. Make sure that he wants you to go forward. And then when you get that yes, which I feel like most women are gonna get a yes. Just, I mean, I'm not trying to receive revelation for anyone or anything, but I, I feel there are very few scenarios in which our heavenly father doesn't feel like women should be wor, being part of our government, part, part of our government, part of our daily needs and daily life of his children. And, and so then start, you know, for some women, it would be good to start to get involved in a different person's campaign and see like, and learn from that, like, like, you know, really getting involved, find a candidate that you can fully support and learn from that. And then also, that's a really good start of you have someone in your corner when you do run. You have someone that, you know, has political capital. Even if they've lost, they still have, they, they usually have had a voice, they usually have someone. And so you can learn from their, from their runs. You, you know, there, there's so many ways to get involved and learn and then, and then just, just do it. Do your best. And if you lose, learn from it and go again. Cause I know so many women or other little candidates, they've ran and they've lost, but they ran again and they won. Because part of it is just getting your name out there, it's learning and growing and becoming a better, a better candidate.
Yeah. That, I mean, that's so true. Most people don't win every race that they run for, especially at first. And so, but, you know, picking it, picking yourself up and learning from your, what, what, what you did wrong and what you did right and going forward and trying again, I think is so, such good advice. Well, we are almost out of time. And I didn't ask you beforehand if you would have an invitation for our listeners, but do you have an invitation you could give to our listeners? I think you've given a couple, so maybe just pick one. Um, for something for them to do in the next little while to, you know, figure out. Go ahead.
I think my invitation would be, is pray to our heavenly father. And either ask him how you can help your community in, in this political atmosphere, or even better, think about the ways in which you can help. Think about what offices you could run for potentially. Think about, political issues important in your community. And then ask heavenly father specifically, can I run for this state position? This local city position? Can I run? Can I help with this political issue that is coming up in the, ask him specifically what to do and then follow through.
I like, I like that, to find something specific and do your research and then pray about it and see if that's, that's where he wants you to go. That's fantastic advice. Thank you. Shontae, it's been such a joy to talk to you today. You are amazing and I hope we can talk again soon and keep in touch. I, um, am really excited for our listeners to hear this podcast. Uh, we covered some really important ground. I feel like I learned a lot. So, um, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I feel very, very blessed.
And thank you, everyone, for listening in to the Project Elected podcast. For free resources and materials, head over to projectelectwomen.org. We'd love for you to subscribe, rate, give a review on iTunes. So until next time, talk to you soon.